This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Thank you very much, and welcome to this evening's Board of Education recognition portion of our meeting prior to the public meeting that begins at 7:00 P. M. And we're starting this evening a little bit differently than we have in the past and that we normally do at any meeting because this month in New York State, we recognize school boards officially next week, but our meeting is this week and not next. So we thank our Board of Education and recognize you tonight with some presentations from students. I think a great reminder of what you enable to happen here each and every day. To begin, though, we'd like to ask our board president, Mr. Davis, could you pass around the wrapped packages right next to you from Mrs. Lanzapine? And we're going to start, it's always kind of great, perhaps, before we blow out the candles, we're going to start with a gift. How about that? And we'd like you to just open that up. Very excited to present this to you this evening from our students in gratitude for your service.
Well wrapped, well wrapped.
Well wrapped, thank you. Okay, three, two, one, go ahead, tear it off. So this is the work of BHS senior Nora Bavit. Nora is here tonight with her parents, Kellye and Gray.
Thank you so much.
It's the day who has the original artwork there and jumped right off of the page when we saw the various sorts of art. Our kids are so incredibly talented. This just spoke to us in a different way, really kind of just stopping. You help fill vessels in this district in so many ways in terms of heart and knowledge and skill and talent, and your work allows that to happen here. And Nora captured it, we think, beautifully. So again, we could thank Nora for a wonderful performance. If you tell her her only job was to wave awkwardly and say, "You didn't do it awkwardly, you did it wonderfully." Do you want to speak about the work at all now that I'm putting you on the spot? We'll give you one more round of applause. So school boards in New York State, to give everybody the history that I think is really interesting and probably because I need better hobbies, really began in the tradition of our colonists who chose people to represent them in their small communities and decide who the traveling teacher should be and what kids should be taught. And I think it's the last really true form of representative democracy. And it's quite an honor for each of you to be chosen by your friends and neighbors to look out for their best interests. And I say best interests, really their best interests, the centers of their universe, the future of their community, the next leaders who will guide us and to make sure that they are getting what they need in every single way. And the community chose you to do that, and we're grateful that you chose to be a part of that. I mentioned to you this history. I think it's interesting to reflect on how that happened in our state in particular. 1638, the first schoolmaster came from Holland to take charge of schools in the Dutch colony of New Amsterdam. The state legislature in 1784 created the Board of Regents, so our students would be certainly familiar with Regents exams. In the 1790s and 1800s, New York State passed several laws allowing school boards to be elected by their communities and for taxes to be levied by those school boards as well, a date that some people wish probably did not happen. The trustees of the academy in Goshen were the official first recognized school board in 1822. And then in 1853, academies combined into centralized school districts, and it went on from there. Interestingly, school boards moved away from some of the micro of school, in other words, figuring out exactly how much coal to have or how much ink for the blotter, in 1933 and moved towards a more policy-related role, which you act on all of the time. School boards oversee the education of our youth, and in New York State now, you oversee over eighty-three and a half billion dollars' worth of funding for children. Two point two five million K through 12 students are the responsibility of our school boards in 689 districts, with boards ranging from three members to thirteen, the most common being your size of seven. And you fulfill, as the School Board Association points out, creating a shared vision for the future of education. You set the direction for the district to achieve highest student performance. In our district, you focus all of the time on holding us accountable for every child and making sure that is the case for each and every student. You develop a budget, present it to the community, align the resources to achievement for every child, and support a healthy school district culture. For us, you are a team that we count on for the perspectives of the community, that we count on for guidance, that we count on for leadership, that we count on to push us to great places in support of our children. You put in countless hours across the state. They say the average is six hours per week. This group puts in far more than that, and we're forever grateful for that service and all you do for our children as examples, as role models, as educators, and as community members that support our children each and every day. So I'd like to ask our community members here tonight and those viewing at home, I know there's so many of them, to give you a round of applause and thank you again for your services. I'm going to ask Dr. Glazer to introduce the kids that will be coming in to perform as well, or their teachers.
So the next group that's going to be coming up and setting up right now is our fifth-grade saxophone ensemble led by Mr. Chris Dozier. Our student performers are Aaron Sepo, Colin Lyons, Kayden Williams, and Jonah Rittenberg. And one of the things I wanted to share about them while they're setting up is that in 2022-23, Fresno Band students played for their very first time at the annual pizza and jazz performance in January. So we're seeing those fifth graders rise up and join some of their middle school families to do some of the wonderful things. And they've learned how to improvise, and they played a very famous jazz tune, "None." Tonight, they're going to be playing "Scarborough Affair" that's arranged by Scott Wagner, and we're super excited for them to start. And while we're getting the next group setting up, I wanted to let you know that we had sixteen band students at our Fresno School participate in solo festivals run by the Monroe County Music Association in January and May, but also that this year, the Fresno Band Program has distributed over a hundred instruments on scholarship that were presented to the students for just this school year. This includes, we provided a lot of instruments for free for families in need, and the Fresno Band Program this year has over 230 students in both fourth and fifth grade. So we're definitely seeing a lot of amazing things happening with that group, and you can see why just now. Our next group coming up is going to be the eighth-grade saxophone quartet led by our great TCMS faculty member, Miss Stephanie Criss, and we're going to be hearing from Anna Miller, Sadie McLeibes, Liam Soriano Turf, and Ben Wotirich. And they're going to be playing "Simple Number Three" by Bach, and it was transcribed by Bachstein.
Hi, everybody. As Dr. Glazer said, this is our E3 saxophone group, and we just wanted to thank you so much for having us here tonight.
Fantastic, fantastic job. It is such a great job. And you can see, like, all the things, they're thirteen. You guys are thirteen, twelve, thirteen? So you can think about what that means. They just turned into teenagers, and they're already able to play so gracefully together to kind of adjust around one another and to also have the poise and dignity to get up in front of a group of people and to, like, be resilient, right? And to just bounce back because coming out here, it probably felt a lot different practicing in an empty room than it did probably with some parents and friends in the board here. So just some amazing skills that we're seeing them develop. Our next group is actually going to be one of our a cappella groups called the Crazy Pitches, and they're led by Sarah Stabell. The student performers are Henry Agar, Carlton Cabral, Callan Cuomo, Eva Cucciarelli, Pax Day Maglan, Giada DiMarco, Hannah Devine, Hope Galloway, Peasy Howe, Taylor Howe, Frances Lovett, Sam Martin, Sean McNally, Ava Mendler, Quinn Quinlin, and Garrett Stolinski. And again, they also are self, they're student-run groups, so they actually choose all their songs, they do all their arrangements, and Miss Stabell is their facilitator who helps guide them through the process. So they've chosen to do "Rich Girl by Hall &amp; Oates," a few word changes, but again, really arranged by our own Frances Lovett, who is a junior this year and going to graduate in class of 2025.
Hello. Hello, I'm Frances Lovett. I'm one of the directors of Crazy Pitches. We're super excited to be here for you today. A cappella for me is my favorite thing at Brighton High School by far. It allows me to be creative and work with such an amazing group of people. I'm super grateful for this opportunity, and Brighton High School has such an amazing performing arts program. It allows people to be creative while making some really awesome stuff. So we're super excited and really grateful for all your support. Thank you guys so much. We're going to be singing "Hall &amp; Oates." One, two, three.
I want to point out one more time that we're the only a cappella group section in all of New York State that is actually arranged and directed by students. So it's really impressive to see them composing different songs, bringing in all the melodies, and really, like, getting to lead in a very different way than anyone else to get them completely ready for college. And so I know every college in America is going to be dying to have you on the a cappella team, so super, super exciting, and thank you, guys. Our next group is actually something that's revived, super fun. This is a surprise performance I don't even know that much about, so I'm really excited. This is our Brighton Bruins dancer. This is students grade six through 12, and they're led in choreographed by our faculty member, Jessica Padilla, who is a single person, she'll even jump into a room and run the entire thing with the students when there's an emergency. And so our student performers tonight are Michelle Arnold, Sophia Baker, Samuelella Badway, Aurora Cabral, Danielle Ferguson, Cara Fillmore, Emerson, Delaney McGowan, Emma McGowan, and Megan Mender. So we'll just hand it over.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Aw, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have one missing.
Yeah, thank you. Awesome job.
Great job.
Thank you.
And some of you might not know this, but during COVID, a lot of our dance teams stopped performing together and stopped practicing. And so Jessica Padilla is really wonderful for reviving this club for us, and we're really, really grateful to her for this first year of taking it up. So they've actually practiced for the last two weeks. That's it. So they are really super excited, and we're really proud of our director, family, Gabe Majestyr, because he got, like, a last-minute shout-out call, and he just showed up, and he's like, "I know what to do, I know what to do." I was really, really happy for that. So I think that we're moving on to some board work, and I'll step back a little bit, but I'm excited to talk to you guys later.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, October 10th. This meeting is called to order. To begin with, on behalf of the entire board, we'll thank so many kids, students within our schools for the performances we just saw for the last half hour. It was fantastic. Christine had wanted to sing the Star Spangled Banner to open the meeting, but now there's no time for that, so that's kind of a bummer. So we'll sort of roll forward from there. But I'll ask Dr. McGowan to comment next, please.
Yes, we just want to take a moment this evening to begin first, as yesterday, we did not have school. It is a federal holiday called Columbus Day, but it is also Indigenous People Recognition Day. And really take a moment as we start the meeting to acknowledge that this learning here, this meeting, this space, is taking place on the traditional unceded land of the Seneca and Ho'oponoshaunee people. We acknowledge that the space here rests on the history of colonization, displacement, settler colonialism, imperialism, and genocide, and it is our intention that the fruits of this meeting are offered to these indigenous people, elders, ancestors, both living and those that have transitioned as well. We also are pausing to consider tonight and recognize, reflect on the incredible and frankly horrific atrocities that occurred this weekend in Israel and continue in the conflict between Israel and Hamas. Our thoughts, our prayers, and our wishes for peace and comfort and consolation are with our many, many community members directly impacted by this troubling crisis, by students visiting here right now from Modi and Israel and their teachers. And as we have communicated as a district, we are here to support everyone and their families and ask that people please reach out if there's anything we can do to be there for you. Please contact through teachers, through counselors, through principals, through our office, if there's anything at all we can do to support members of our community during clearly a very troubling time for everyone. And if I could ask, in both instances, that we just pause for a moment. Thank you.
And we thank you for the communication, Dr. McGowan, that you sent out to our community on behalf of the Brighton Central School District. We want to be there to support kids and support families. As is the case with all public meetings, we have the opportunity for public participation. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment to the board?
I would like to make a special call to the podium. Jamie Porter, President of the Brighton Teachers Association, here to say hello to you this morning.
Hello and good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I am Jamie Porter, the President of the Brighton Teachers Association, and I want to say a few words. I tried to channel my inner Larry Davis, who is an extreme hit at our opening day ceremony. His twenty-second speeches that are on a post-it note really have won the hearts and minds of our entire membership, allowing them to get into their classrooms and do the things I want to do.
It's all in the prep, Jamie. It's all in the prep.
Great, so thank you, thank you for that. On behalf of the Brighton Teachers Association, it is both an honor and a privilege to stand before you today to express our gratitude and appreciation for your tireless efforts as our Board of Education. Behind every policy, every decision, and every initiative, there lies a shared commitment to providing our students with the best possible education. Our board members are the unsung heroes who work behind the scenes, creating an environment where our students can thrive. It's not just about textbooks, classrooms, or budgets. It's about fostering a love of learning, nurturing critical thinking skills, and instilling values that will guide our students throughout their lives. You all understand this, and your commitment to providing access to a rigorous and holistic education for all of our students is remarkable. Today, I extend the BTA's thanks to each member of the board. Your dedication does not go unnoticed. Your work does not go unappreciated. As we reflect on the achievements of our district, let us not forget that these accomplishments are a testament to the collective work of our school community, which is anchored by your steady leadership. Together, we've turned challenges into opportunities, setbacks into comebacks, and have made students' dreams a reality. In gratitude for your service, the BTA has donated to the Brighton Education Fund in the board's name. Though a small gesture, it represents the generosity that volunteering for the board embodies and symbolizes your encouragement for staff to implement new ideas to make this district uniquely outstanding. As the BTA president, a Brighton resident, and a father of two students in the district, thank you for all of your efforts.
We appreciate the work that you and all of the teachers do and the partnership we have with you, so thank you very much. It's much appreciated. Anyone else? Seeing no one. We had a raft of documents come into us over the last few days that you all had a chance to review. First up, of course, is the agenda. Can I have a motion, please, to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Also approval from the minutes of our last meeting, September 26, 2023 meeting? Had a chance, I'm sorry, any changes, edits, or comments with regards to those minutes? Motion to approve the minutes as received.
So moved.
Moved by Esther.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now going to put Dr. Tracy Glazer in the very, very difficult position of trying to beat the opening. Like, I think you just turned ahead a mic drop with what we saw in that show. So we look forward to getting an update on the visual and performing arts, please.
Thank you guys so much for having me here tonight. I'm super excited to be talking about something that I'm so passionate about, and you got to see our kids come out here tonight and just the love and the energy that they bring. And for me, to see that dance group with sixth graders through 12th graders who are in two different buildings trying to practice and coming together and all being equal is just the most amazing thing. I want to start off tonight by telling you I'm going to do something a little different than maybe we've done before, and you'll get to see the numbers and you'll get to see the facts, but I wanted to lead with some stories because you're really the ambassadors who go out into the community and share our stories. There's a student who graduated last year of the class, or is going to be graduating this year, the class of 2023, or did. This student struggled a lot in most non-music classes, overcame some really challenging situations at home, and found a place of belonging in vocal music. And mentored ninth-grade students, he took them under his wing last year, and he was a student that ran the winter concert last year. He ran in in his wrestling uniform, sang, 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 literally his wrestling buddies all came in, clapped, and they all ran out as he ran to a match. This is the type of district where kids can balance and be a part of everything. They can choose, and they don't have to choose exclusively. They can actually layer different things on. He's now majoring in music at MCC, and he's working to follow a career path in music production. I'm going to tell you another story of a graduate from last year. She participated in Brighton Summer Arts starting in third grade. All of the vocal groups and musicals at TCMS and BHS, you saw her right up front and center. She's now a voice performance and music education major at Eastman School of Music, hopefully to come back into the district someday, which is one of the top-ranked conservatories in the country. This summer, she volunteered her time, even though she was doing paid performances elsewhere, and she worked as a staff member of the Brighton Summer Arts. That's the program that her career theaters, her theater career started in, and it's full circle. And that's the type of students that you're supporting. Not only do they give while they're here, they give after they leave. while they're here, they give after they leave. And some of you are really testament to that yourselves. This is the 14th consecutive year that our district has been named one of the best communities for music education in the country. Designations are made to districts and schools that demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment and access to music education. Our students participate in, there are so many acronyms, I'm learning them all. Sarah Stabell's been really helpful for me. Mixma, Nisma, NAFMI, NAM. But Mixma and Nisma are solo festivals. Last year, we had over 250 students from our district who participated. Over 245 students at FRES right now are taking, they're taking instrumental music before and during the school day. And over 150 participate in before-school chorus. We not only need to recognize the teachers and the students, but also their families for bringing them ahead of time. And I really want to give a huge thank to Mike Malloy, Allison Rio, and to Colleen Coggins, because they did something last year that I didn't think could happen in such a quick amount of time. We now have busing for all of our urban suburban students so that they can be here before school and transportation, so that they can participate for the first time in a long time. And the joy and the excitement that you feel, sorry, colleagues, I know it's before the school day starts, so I know when those kids come rushing in and all your security guards come early, it's really amazing and it's really making a big difference. We, in 2022, our all-county festivals, we had 50 students representative from our K through 12 ensemble. And for Nisma area all-state ensembles, we had 38 students selected. It's unprecedented that the average school has about two to five. Tadyn Spiller was a graduating senior last year. She was inducted into 2022-23 NAFMI All-National Orchestra playing trumpet, one of only about 150 students in the nation to recognize that. Over 10 VHS students will represent BCSD at the All-State Music Conference and NISBIDOT Honor Band this year as well. FRES is beaming with things that they do all year long, so I'm only going to highlight a few. Our band and chorus groups takes an annual Red Wing Stadium trip. Last year, just from FRES families alone, over 1,200 people filled, from the Brighton community, filled the stands as our students sang the Pledge of Allegiance, when they sang the entire, like, beautiful anthems. And they also performed on the actual turf in, on the field. We had to teach them that they'd be careful on the turf, because you don't want to tear that up too much. But they sang the National Anthem in a long-lasting tradition that began with retired Brighton music educator, W. Parker, and still continues to this day. Our Council Rock second-grade concert, that's like a kind of a shot, that's as far as my camera would extend. But if you could see in the 360 with our families, really, I think there were a few thousand people who showed up that day, filling the playground, filling the parking lots. The ice cream trucks did really well afterwards. But it starts in second grade. And you can see the enthusiasm and the excitement of the students. Our FRES red and blue bands also participate in the Meadow Brook Parade every year, marching down the street, even though we don't technically have a marching band, we make one, Chris Dozier and Dave Myers. And they're so proud. They memorize that music, they march along in the neighborhood, they lead the community in singing along with them, and the community actually walks alongside of them. Our TCMS band and chorus groups are really just unbelievable. These students on the screen are the ones that are this year's Junior High Area All-State Festival winners. They're going to be presenting and performing on November 3rd and 4th at Batavia High School. They're selected based on their scores from last August. So one of the things that's really beautiful off the department is, even though in seventh and eighth grade they're selected, they're technically in ninth grade when they perform. And so our wonderful ninth-grade teachers and for chorus and for band actually go and work alongside. And it's really a cluster. It's kind of confusing. Sarah does an awesome job at arranging everything, because the busing is really interesting. But we have wonderful teachers such as Allison Coutureau, Bethany Cribbs that you saw tonight, Jenny Moll, Jeremiah Cooper, Sarah Fisher, Rachel Laber, and Sarah Stabell, that all work together making sure that it happens for those students. It's 100% subsidized. A lot of students in the area don't get to do a lot of these opportunities, because the cost often falls on the family. We're here in Brighton, we really go out of our way, making sure that every family who wants to participate, every child has a right and has the ability to be there. We talked earlier about the instruments. Over 100 instruments in one building alone are being subsidized by the district and the commitment that we're making to ensure that every kid has equal access. Our art students are participating in the 2023 New York State School Business Association. I think you all get to be there, I think, having a student art exhibit. We had three students whose works were, like, chosen. This is Kate Myers, this is Mia Lobos, and this is Sam McPherson. To be able to be up there on the national and the New York State stage with their artwork, even though they might not be students that come out and dance in front of us all, they're students who are creating and performing and using everything that they're learning in the liberal arts education here in order to bring it to life and to have a conversation with an audience. Over 20 students are currently working on AP Art and Design portfolios and various media, 2D and 3D media, representing a significant growth in programming for the last school year. 95% of our AP Art History students enrolled in 2023 scored a four or a five on the exams last year. That is an AP that we often don't talk a lot about, AP Music Theory, AP Studio, AP Art History. They're alternative maybe to AP Physics, but they're equally important. And they're something that we're really proud, that every single student has access to in our district. And part of that is because the visual arts team worked together last year to review the legislation and increase our studio art course from a half-year to a full-year course, helping with NICE's policy legislation compliance and allowing us to give a foundation to all of the students. And I want to thank you, because that was definitely a commitment from our board and from our administrative team to allow us to expand that program. And if you look this year, our district visual arts students live exhibit, these are the exhibitions we know, in Nazareth Shared Spaces, RIT Start Here, Brighton Library's Community Display, NICEADA's Regional Show, RIT's Photo Award Show, the Upstairs Gallery from a former principal of VHS who starred one in Pittsburgh, the Solastic Art Awards, and many, many other regional and state-level shows. Our students not only get to create, they get to exhibit, connect, reflect, and evaluate their work with an audience, and to have a serious conversation about what it means and how art has made the world and can change the world, especially in our current times. Our VHS band and chorus groups are unbelievable. Sarah Stabell and Jill Davis, a teacher from Council Rock, came together last year and brought our students to Disney. They got to perform alongside a lot of Disney dancers and performers and take classes from a lot of the Disney staff and really just expand their horizons and to show them what's available to them. We really want to thank her, because that trip is expensive and she does New York City every other year. And again, the students fundraise and we do everything we can to make it accessible to every child. No child was not taken who wanted to participate, regardless of their needs, regardless of their physical needs, regardless of their emotional needs, regardless of their medical needs. Sarah really covered it all and made sure that they all felt like they should be right there on the Disney String stage, singing their hearts out. And a lot of them have grandparents down there or aunts and uncles who came. And that was kind of a surprise for them, to see, like, a lot of family members and just see the greater Orlando community come out and support them. But Brighton High School's Matilda, that was our musical last winter, was awarded through the Distinguished Stars of Tomorrow program. They placed, got awards in every single category. Four of the VHS students were honored at the regional level, moving on, and four students were awarded the opportunity to serve as tech crew for the event. Oftentimes, we talk about the people on the stage. One of the things that's been super impressive for me here is that there's 70 students at the high school, who every single day, including right now, because I know they're there practicing, show up free, not paid, volunteer their time for three to four hours a night, usually three to five nights a week, helping us put on concerts, helping us put on the musicals. And they're all those kids behind the scenes, learning technical skills. We already have some of our students get into some amazing colleges around the country, Ringling and Southern Florida, for technical production in theater this year, for next year, early decision, some of them on full rides. And that really is the behind-the-scenes work that makes everything happen. But I want to point out one of my last stories of the night. For the first time in our district's history, a VHS student, Hope Galloway, went to the Jimmy Awards and performed on Broadway. For some of you, you're like, what are the Jimmy Awards? They are the it. There's about 60 students from across the nation who are selected as the very best musical theater performers in the country at that time. And they get to go free of charge to New York City for four to five days, and they get to work with Broadway legends and choreographers and directors. It's unbelievable. They all got to meet some of my favorite people, maybe a little Ben Platt worked with them, so just throwing that out. And they, Hope's parents were beaming. And everybody I knew from Brighton had their TV screens on, watching that on WXIX, it was happening in real time. It was absolutely unbelievable. Hope is a senior this year. She participates in multiple vocal ensembles, musicals. She's the president of the choirs. She competed at those Jimmy Awards. And now she's volunteering with Artist Unlimited, a community group run for actors with special needs. As a part of our musical, she's giving back to the larger community through the skills and experience that she gained in our program. She had the opportunity to stand in front of every producer and director, who are very smart to be recruiting high schoolers. And we know that she's going to go on and on and on and make us all proud. On the horizon for next year, we're really looking at ways to expand the summer arts program and to offer highly competitive financial aid packages, so that every single person that wants to be here can be here. But also for parents that they can afford it, but not with three or four kids at home, because it's super hard for all of our families in Brighton to be able to support that. So we're looking into possibly having alumni show to raise funds. Also, Fab, which is our fabulous, fabulous Friends of the Arts in Brighton, friends and family, have been coming together alongside of us to try to figure out ways that parents and family can engage, not just be involved in concerts, but to be engaged in what our students are doing. And so you can see here, Mrs. Gray is actually a violinist in, at Eastman in the RPO. And she came in with our youngest students last year at Council Rock, and every single child got to hold the violin, play the violin. Winnie the dog got to watch, but I'm sure Winnie wanted to participate. But really seeing a re-energized partnership with Fab, and their goal is to increase outreach to Council Rock and the FRES communities, but also to support us a little bit differently than just selling bottled water, to really start again, to move from being involved in what we do to engaged. Re-engaging with performances and exhibition post-COVID across the community through venues such as Brighton Rotary Club, the RPO, Hoxsey and the County Executive's Office. And something that blew my mind last year, as a first-year faculty administrator here, was district strings. I hope no one hears on the fire department, because it was really packed, more so than we ever thought. So we learned about code. But if you look here, this is only a glimmer. You can't even see the second half of the room, where our fourth through 12th graders play together and go around the room and play, and their families come and celebrate. And it is an unbelievable event. If you've never done it, it happens in the spring. We're trying to figure out how to do it when the construction starts on the music thing next year, but we know. And then we're also looking at new opportunities for high school AP coursework, graduation choices aligned with our current offerings, and looking at NICE's Individualized Arts Assessment Pathway. We're hoping that next year we can be part of the pilot districts that are taking up NICE's call to look at, how do you earn a region's diploma with honors and distinction through the arts? And it is possible, and it means that some things might have to change in the way we look at things here, but it is an amazing opportunity. We also, as you got to see, want to honor student voice and leadership in reigniting the dance teams at TCMS and VHS, and is unbelievable. Two weeks ago on a Saturday, they led themselves a day of dance. And students who had never stepped on the stage before, or who felt really intimidated, because everyone else is a dancer already, that's a rally call I hear all the time. And to see these students come out and work together, we had a new young lady who was starting the district on October 3rd. And this was the week before. She had come to open house and Jeff Green introduced me to her. And she came to that day of dance. And she left with a phone full of numbers, of new friends. And she joined tech crew, this because it's too late to join the musical. And she said to me the other day, I just want you to know, I'm new to the district, but I am Squidward. And that will be it. So I just wanted to share with you that you're allowing a lot of kids to step up and take a risk, even kids who are new to our district. It's really hard to transition in. Also, we're looking at the new programming, hopefully having a musical at FRES, maybe a bi-weekly art and theater talks. I've been occurring with Colleen Parent and Sarah Stabell, with local experts in the field, again, trying to bring people back. And last week, Dinette Campbell-Bow, one of our very first urban suburban students here in the district, whose son just joined the district this year, he's percussion, and he's working with Dave Myers and Chris Dozier, that you got to see Chris earlier, came in and were sharing some of their experiences and what it meant to be a musician and what it meant to be an artist back then, and how it is impacting their lives even today. So I want to thank you so much for your time. And I just wanted to, like, say again, you're doing amazing things, and you're really allowing our students to shine and just be who they are in every single way possible, and to express themselves, and just to have so much voice and choice. So thank you so much.
Just a great night for the VPA program overall, just really impressive.
First off, Dr. Glazer, excellent presentation. So thank you. That was really fantastic. And the narratives really bring it to life, for sure. And the work that your department, I see Sarah Stabell sitting behind you, is really just amazing. And thank you to all of you. Your impact as a board is felt in so many different ways in the organization. But one of the ways it can be most visually represented is that, is everything that was presented, because those are, to us, essential in this work and in this district. But it is not always mandated, all of those opportunities, all of this, just space, right? And so you provide the soil for that to happen, the fertilizer for that to happen, the seed for that to happen, the equipment to make it all come to life. And that's your work. I mean, and it is so interesting that years ago, this tradition was started where that was the presentation for tonight, and that those gifts were given to you in terms of kids performing, because you, your work makes that happen. And your volunteerism makes that happen as well as it does. So we thank you for that. And Dinette Campbell-Brown also in the Brighton Alumni Hall of Fame and a wonderful human being, who we're so happy is here with her son as well, and her wonderful husband. But thank you for that. And thank you, Tracy, for bringing that all to life. Really appreciate it.
A number of different actions to approve tonight. First up, we have the acceptance of the annual financial statements for the period ending June 30th, 2023. If you've had a chance to review those, are there any questions? Motion to approve the annual financial statements.
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of a cooperative bid for fine paper. Not just good paper, but fine paper.
But find good.
Fine. Any questions with regards to the bid? Motion to approve.
Still moved.
Moved by Esther?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Also, as discussed, approval of a professional services contract with the U of R Athletics Group, in regards to strength training and conditioning and things like that. You all have been made aware of that. Questions with regards to that contract? Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, approval of bid recommendation for the emergency boiler project for French Road Elementary School. We want to keep the kids warm as it gets close to the winter season. Sometimes things in the HVAC room break, and this is the case. Grateful for Lou and the facilities, buildings and grounds team for being on top of this and getting us in a position to be able to get this fixed. We did go out to bid. We have found somebody to do this work. Are there any questions with regards to this work? Motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
A bunch of fundraising activities, as I like to say, great opportunities to eat, but also support a lot of the programs that Dr. Glazer talked about, as well as a lot of different athletic programs. Personnel agenda is on there as well, and you've had a chance to review that. With regards to the consent agenda, are there any questions? I'm sorry, it also includes field trip approvals as well. If seen no questions, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'm sorry. I forgot. I got to read the gifts. Thank you very much. So we have a number of great gifts tonight, and it's important that we read these. We are very fortunate as a district to have so many generous people and the Brighton Education Fund supporting so many different student activities. It'll take me a minute, but I'm going to read through these gifts. First, a gift from Bonnie Baxter to the Brighton Central School District Instrumental Music Department of two violins, two cases, sheet music, and two bows with accessories. A gift of $1,100 to TCMS from the Brighton Education Fund for board games and other hands-on materials to enhance the weekly building-wide wind program. A gift of $4,393 to TCMS from the Brighton Education Fund for the eighth-grade students to take a field trip to the Memorial Art Gallery. A gift of $914 to TCMS from the Brighton Education Fund for double-sided standing whiteboards to enable student groups to work solving math problems. A gift of $310 to TCMS from the Brighton Education Fund for an American Sign Language class. A gift of $1,500 to Brighton High School from the Brighton Education Fund to bring author Liza Weimer, 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 I'm not sure how to say that, I'm sorry, for a full-day visit to VHS. A gift of $839 to VHS from the Brighton Education Fund for 100 copies of the assignment for students in the VHS Book Club. And finally, a gift of $4,000 to Brighton High School from the Brighton Education Fund for Katie Mealy to create documentation stations in four art rooms. It's just a truly impressive list of gifts and donations. As we always say, we are grateful to the Brighton Education Fund for all the different things that it supports for our kids. Now I will Now I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Carrie Lynn?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Before we adjourn, two quick notes. We will be at French Road for the next meeting, which I think is on the 24th, so we'll be at French Road for a part of our On the Road Again tour. And secondly, as always, thanks to Mike and Bill, working a little bit shorthanded tonight, they didn't have a third person, and we had a lot of people in here, so our thanks to our AV crew for getting this done for us, a little round of applause for them. Dr. McGowan, anything else?
No, just thank you for all your support and work.
Great, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Esther, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.